Okay, this is a hearing and as such I have a disclosure statement. This is for the, uh, an ordinance amending the City of Gerhart zoning ordinance section 6.0708, preservation and removal of trees. All persons testifying shall be deemed parties to the application and must provide their name and full mailing address if they wish to be notified of the decision, continuances, appeals, or other procedural actions required by the code. The city zoning code specifies applicable criteria to be relied upon in making a decision. Those criteria and findings of fact are in the city's staff report. Public testimony should be limited to those criteria and findings of fact or to other city or state land use standards that the person testifying believes apply to the proposed land use action. Failure to raise an issue in person or in writing with sufficient detail to afford the hearing body and parties to the hearing an opportunity to respond to that issue precludes appeal to the city council or the land use board of appeals or to seek damages in circuit court due to a condition of approval. Before the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may ask the planning, the city council for an opportunity to present additional relevant evidence or testimony that is within the scope of the hearing. The hearing's body shall grant the request by scheduling a date to finish the hearing, a continuance, to a time and date certain or by leaving the record open for additional evidence or testimony. Do any counselors need to declare a conflict, a conflict of interest or an ex parte contact or personal bias at this time?
No.
No.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to challenge a council's, a council member's ability to make an impartial decision? Anyone on Zoom? Seeing no hand raised, seeing no one raise their hand in council chambers, we'll move on. Chad, will you read the staff report, please?
Uh, actually, I believe we have Garrett Phillips here. If you wouldn't mind, you can do the staff report because we missed the stand at this.
That's fine, Garrett. I'm sorry. I, um, didn't see your hand raised, so I just went right by your name.
Garrett, are you okay with that?
Good evening, mayor and city council members. Yes, I'm fine with that. All right, so ordinance 942 amends, uh, City of Gerhart's zoning ordinance, section on, uh, the, on what is required to remove trees within the City of Gerhart. So, uh, the proposed ordinance is what was recommended by Planning Commission, following several meetings, uh, public meetings in 2023, a city council meeting in January of 2024 that produced some feedback, uh, to the Planning Commission and the Planning Commission's reconsideration of the amendments in a March 2024 public meeting, where they took some of city council's feedback and directed staff to come back uh, to you with this, uh, recommended, uh, ordinance. So, um, Planning Commission's purpose, um, that they settled on through their lengthy process was to make it possible for, um, staff to be more aware of tree, tree removal and tree cutting activity within the City of Gerhart, so that staff could be more responsive to citizen concerns and inquiries when residents, uh, call to inquire about whether tree cutting that they observe around the city is, in fact, permitted or not. And they also wanted to make it, um, easier to use, uh, the ordinance by changing, um, some simple language that related to the measurement of trees, um, so that it would be easier for people to measure their own trees, um, without performing any special math calculations. So that was their purpose, uh, when they recommended the ordinance back in fall of 2023 to city council. Uh, when we brought the ordinance to city council in January of 2024, individual city council members had a diverse range of, uh, feedback and concerns. And, uh, we documented those and brought them back to the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission chose to take up some of those and recommend some changes, and those included, um, changes that, exempt invasive species, three invasive tree species from any kind of permit requirement, so that it's easier to cut down those kinds of trees. They also clarified based on some of your individual, uh, feedback that when a tree has multiple trunks, only the largest trunk is to be measured when determining whether or not it meets the definition of a tree. And, um, then they also took up another issue that, uh, some individual city council members, um, raised, and that was that, they wanted to make sure that the ordinance does not, uh, cause delay or inhibit individuals' ability to correct tree, hazardous tree situations. And so basically the change that was made is that, um, although city staff can already, uh, determine whether or not a tree is hazardous, the change that was made to the ordinance is that, um, an individual resident in Gerhart can also hire an arborist, and if an arborist says that a tree is hazardous, then they can go ahead and, and, and correct that situation without first obtaining a permit. So, that's a brief summary of the overall, uh, sort of process and this lengthy road that, you know, we've gone down that, that leads us to today. I'm going to go through the ordinance briefly and touch on, uh, some of these changes. So, um, first, there are changes in section B definition. Again, I just highlighted those, um, instead of where previously people had to measure trees in diameter, um, now they can measure their trees in terms of circumference. The definition of tree also does not include these three invasive species and, um, only the primary or largest trunk is to be measured. The definition comes into play in terms of which trees, you know, require permits for being removed. So that's why this is important. We'll, we'll get to the next step in a moment. Um, section C includes a change in that, uh, section C1 is language that was already in the ordinance, but we, um, we moved it up from the end of the ordinance to make sure that it was clear, um, that, that these situations where there's new construction occurring, that trees that need to be removed, uh, within like a proposed building footprint, for example, those are exempt from the ordinance, and that was already an exemption that was in this ordinance. We just moved it from page two to page one. Uh, that was part of the Planning Commission's deliberations in 2023. All right, moving on to section D. Um, I would say these are sort of like the, the primary changes that came out of all of the Planning Commission's work. And this is what speaks to, um, providing staff with more awareness of tree cutting activity that's happening around town. So where previously removal of more than five trees in a 12-month period required a permit from the Planning Commission. Now, under the proposed ordinance, removal of, uh, less than five trees also requires a permit, but the permit is issued by staff and there are no decision criteria for issuing the permit. Um, the proposed ordinance states that, um, staff are to issue the permit after receiving an application. So that is to say that, uh, the purpose of this is so that staff are aware that someone is going to be cutting down up to five trees, aware of the location, are able to count the number of trees on a, on a rolling basis in a 12-month period if, if someone applies twice, but the permit is to be issued. There are not criteria, you know, there's, there's no basis for not issuing a permit for, for removing less than five trees. And when it comes to removing more than five trees in a 12-month period, the proposed ordinance remains the same. It's a Planning Commission decision. The criteria that the Planning Commission uses to decide on the permit do not change in the proposed ordinance. Moving on to section F. Um, this is where city coun, individual city council members provided feedback in January 2024 to the effect that not only should staff be able to, uh, in obvious situations, determine that a tree is hazardous and, and tell a resident that they can go ahead and cut down a tree or do what they need to do to correct the hazard. A resident doesn't even need to call the city first. They can just have an arborist, uh, come and make that determination and correct the hazard. And the arborist is supposed to, um, document their determination, and then after the fact, um, the resident is supposed to, um, uh, communicate, uh, that to the city, uh, by, by sharing that written determination and filling out the tree removal permit application form, like, after the tree is removed. But they can just go ahead and correct the hazard without delay. Um, so those are the changes that are proposed based on Planning Commission's work, uh, some individual city council members' feedback in January 2024, and then Planning Commission's reconsideration in March of 2024. Staff received feedback, uh, public comments in, in preparation for the June city council meeting. I believe it was, there were three public comments that, um, I could say without, you know, with, they, they all were, were individual, uh, from individuals, but they, a common theme among them was that, um, they felt that the existing ordinance is adequate, um, that additional regulations are not needed, and that it shouldn't be adopted. At the same time, uh, I didn't, I, you know, I'm, I'm interested in hearing more from, from the public if, if there's specific concerns with how the proposed ordinance, um, adds, you know, to, uh, like a real burden to the public or, um, or, or is an overreach in terms of regulation? Because in, in several ways, the ordinance actually is, uh, removes regulation or, uh, or makes it easier to cut down trees. For example, in the case of those invasive species or where there's a multi-trunk tree, it provides that now an arborist can determine that a tree is a hazard instead of city staff having to concur. But yes, when you want to remove, uh, one to five trees instead of six or more in a year, you, you do need to at least fill out this application form, uh, before getting your permit. Um, we also had, uh, some proposed amendments, um, submitted, by a council member, and those, um, I think are going to be up for discussion this evening and were available to make any additional changes that you want in response to public comments, uh, or anything that, you know, you as individuals have to say tonight. So I think I'm gonna, um, leave it at that for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Garrett. So what do we have for an applicant's report if Garrett is the staff report? Do we have an applicant's report?
No.
Okay. All right, so we'll move on to proponents. And I've got, um, eight names here. I know, uh, Tom, you want to talk about parks.
Yeah.
So that'll be during the city council. Someone else, um, Audrey, you want to talk about fireworks? So that'll be a city council. Tree ordinance is, uh, Deanna Mansell. State your full name and address, please.
I'm, uh, Deanna Mansell, uh, 2945 Highway 101 North. I wanted to talk about, uh, basically the invasive species aspect of the proposed ordinance. The, uh, the species that they had named are not a complete list. I, in 2004, Neacoxie watershed commission did restoration work on, um, Neacoxie Creek on Woodland Avenue at Nora Taylor's house, and she had a Siberian elm. When we did it back then, we thought it was a, a Chinese elm, but it was a Chinese, uh, it was Siberian elm. And that tree was planted by the civilian conservation corps back in the 1930s, and it was for restoration and erosion on the creek. And so she had one of these trees in her backyard, and it was sending runners that were going up underneath the foundation of her house. And then a bunch of runners along the creek. So our first project in 2004 was to cut another tree down and then paint the tree and, and try to paint the, the runners along the creek. And because we did not continuously try to control the Siberian elm, the, the elm is all over the place, you know? I mean, Nora showed me in her, in her, um, backyard that elm tree suckers were coming up in her drain field. And so I, I was saying, well, you know, maybe if we got a watershed commission involved in trying to address the elm trees in Gerhart, you know, that would be a solution, but we need to add the elm tree on that list. And the other tree that I mentioned was the weeping willow tree that was planted in my neighbor's yard. And, and that tree is many times worse than a Siberian elm. So we need to kind of, when, when we're working on an ordinance, kind of identify what's going to create a problem in people's yards. So I just thought those two trees at least need to be added to the ordinance. And if Gerhart wants to maybe work with the watershed council or do whatever it takes to get that problem under control, I think that would be, uh, an important first step. So thank you.
Thank you, Deanna. Next up will be Angela Sidlow. I'm sorry if I miss.
You did it right. You did it right. There's no W at the end. My name's Angela Sidlow, and I live at 516 Summit Avenue here in Gerhart. And I just wanted to read, uh, a letter that was submitted by, uh, Robert Carson, who lives at 226 Ridge Drive in Gerhart, um, tonight. But before I read that, I wanted to just ask the question, if in all of this planning for the tree consideration, is the riparian zone being considered within this or is that separate? Because I think we have a very big responsibility to have specific regulations regarding riparian zone because I know there's been some, um, times since I lived here in the eight years that the riparian zone was not measured before a tree was cut down. And so, um, I think that's a big concern because that speaks to a bigger subject about our watershed area and, um, being good stewards for the beautiful older trees that we still have here. So with that said, I'm going to read Robert Carson's, um, letter. He said, he says, "My wife Claire was raised in Platte County. We've been coming to Gerhart for more than half a century. With its waters, wetlands, streams, and the ocean, dunes, and wildlife, especially birds, Gerhart is a special town. Trees provide carbon sequestration to help combat Earth's greatest problem, habitat, beauty, and shade. Every tree is valuable, so it should be exceptional circumstances when one needs to be removed. We must have strong possible tree preservation ordinances. No tree should be cut down in wetlands. Of significant importance are the old growth Sitka spruce along the ridge path. No building permit should be issued on land within reach of the next tsunami. Trees should be carved with required landscapes for new development. The residents, homeowners, business owners, and public officials should be making the decisions about Gerhart trees. There should be no input from those with a conflict of interest, specifically businesses or individuals who receive payment for tree removal. Indeed, if Gerhart has not already done so, the city should apply to be an Arbor Day Foundation to be a Tree City USA. The number of tree species in Gerhart is exceptionally large. List available on request. Thanks to planting by homeowners, our native trees like lodgepole, shore pine, western hemlock, Douglas fir, Sitka spruce, red alder, a nitrogen fixer, and big leaf maple are magnificent. I ardently support the strong ordinance regarding the preservation of, and removal of trees and encouragement to plant more trees. Thank you respectfully, Bob, August 3rd, 2024."
Thank you. Okay, now, Iverson, are you going to talk about the tree ordinance? Are you talking about?
Well, I don't know if it will fit your agenda, but, uh, I wanted to talk about, uh, we're asked questions from the council here. What's the city, uh, take or responsibility of a tree that damaged or destroyed my house on city property?
Would, would you please state your name and address?
Okay, you are last dense, uh, 701 Fifth Street. That's, uh, the, it would be the southeast corner of the Ridge Path and, uh, Fifth Street.
Okay.
And I have numerous times, uh, the city's aware of my concern for many years. Just with a smile in the face. And, uh, the tree is really, uh, taking a liking for my house. And it seems like every year it's liking it more and more. Sometimes, you know, when I have time, when I come back, come to Gerhart, I, I worry about it if, uh, if, uh, you know, I, should I sleep upstairs or downstairs? Kind of thing.
Iverson, I, I think you're a neutral comment. And right now we're with proponents, which are people for the tree ordinance. So I'm going to move you two steps, the, the neutral comment, and we'll address that at that time, okay?
Okay.
That way we can.
I'm wondering if this, you know, fits your agenda right now, you know?
Well, it's about trees. I don't know that we can answer your question as far as I'd have to ask Chad and I'd have to ask Peter. But right now, let me move over to, okay.
Please do, ma'am. I'm sorry.
That, that's quite all right. I just, I want to make sure that we're in, in sync with, uh, my little script. Um, I've got Robin on the tree ordinance and this, are you an opponent or an opponent? Okay, then please state your name and address.
My name is Robin Lane and my address is 715 Second Street. Um, I had a bunch of things I was going to say. I said all of them. And I'm not, so I want to say that I am a opponent of taking care of this beautiful place and the trees which make it a beautiful place. And a lot of the trees, I, as I was walking here, walking down the street and looking just with my eyes open, what do I feel? And see, it's the trees. The trees are Gerhart in many ways. You can't see the ocean in Gerhart, but you can see everywhere is trees. And they, um, provide beauty, they provide shade, they provide a home for many, many, you know, their whole, um, ecological, um, world that we need to help and can, kind of, I can, you know, but I feel like what, that individuals, um, that the care of these trees and the continuation of Gerhart to be the place that it is cannot be fully left in the hands of people who can make money off of that. It needs to be a community getting together saying, these trees are valuable no matter where they're from. You know, whether they're on someone's property or not, and they're going to fall on someone's house that needs to be taken care of. You know, I feel like, um, so however much closer this ordinance takes that, um, the possibility that people can know what people are doing to the trees before they do them, before they're removed because they're hundreds and hundreds of years old and they cannot be replaced. And if you can imagine Gerhart with no trees, most of us would probably not even be here. And I think that whatever can be done to protect this resource that we live with, but it's not really ours.
Okay. That's it? Thank you, Robin.
So I'm for it.
Yes, okay.
And I'm for more.
All right, um, Matthew Johnson, are you a proponent or are you an opponent?
I can move you to the neutral.
I'll move you to the neutral. Okay, Bill Porter?
I'm another neutral.
You're another neutral? Okay. All right, so that's all the proponents. Are there any hands raised on the screen? I don't see any. All right, we're moving over to opponents. Are there any opponents to the ordinance? Anyone on screen wanting to raise their hand and say something? Then we're going to move to neutral comments. Iverson, you're up.
Evar.
What?
Evar.
Evar? I'm sorry. I'll keep saying it the wrong way until I get it right.
Mayor, for that same reason, people have dropped that I am only var.
That's so much easier. Thank you for that.
Well, I, I don't know if this is, uh, on the program or not, but, uh, my, uh, my problem started when a neighbor to the west or on the other side of the Ridge Path, uh, built his cathedral there and, uh, did some, uh, land moving in. And, uh, this is where, I think, under, uh, Mr. McNulty's leadership here, you know, the man's, uh, city manager. And, uh, I, I complained at the time that, uh, the tree that was being left was not good because it was, it was a wooded area and the winds from the west, you know, were protecting this thing. And of course, everything got cleared except the tree that's on the city property on the Ridge Path. I think the 30 blew right away, 30 blew right away. And, uh, now it reexcavated and the tree. And now it re-escalated and the tree started leaning, leaning, leaning. And now I think she, you know, my concern and. You know, Mr. McNulty exited, you know, take it out and, and the person that was building the house at that time, he doesn't own it anymore, somebody else has bought it, bought it. And he exited, you know, and, and the person building the house said, no problem. I'll put it in with the rest of the stuff and they'll just take it out. Well, we had a next door neighbor with, was, you know, I'm, I'm not going to call him a tree lover. I said, I like trees as much as anybody else. And, and of course, the next time I came over, next weekend came over, the eggs were gone. I said, what happened? Well, a next door neighbor, person complained about it that shouldn't be taken out. Well, I've been an architect now for sixty-two years and I've seen some damages, tree damages and where buildings have been damaged, destroyed, you know, all over the northwest. And you can't predict these things, is it going to happen or not going to happen? Are we going to have a tsunami? Are we going to have an earthquake? Are we going to have a worst rainstorm that we've ever had? Who can predict that? All we can do is just anticipate. And I don't like it. I don't like that tree there. Okay, so I don't know what I, I can do about it. I don't want to do anything about it. It's on the city property and, you know, I've, I've written letters to the city. I've tried to say, Arborists out there. And of course, one, I think what the guy, one guy says, no problem. Another guy said something else, so, you know, figure it. But I am worried and tired of it.
Okay.
Take a look at it, Mayor.
I will take a look at it tomorrow and I'll talk with Chad, okay?
Okay.
And we'll get something in writing to you, what we're going to do.
Well, we've done that before and.
I will make sure it gets done.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Matthew Johnson, your name and your address.
Johnson, three three Summit Avenue here in Garrett. I just want to say two things. One is after going through all this paperwork, it was very evident to me that there's a lot of heart and soul, a lot of pride put into this. I just want to say, yes, part of the city, thank you for doing it. That's awesome. The question I have is on the application, there is a reference to mitigation. And my question is, is this assumed that with the tree removal, there is an automatic neutral mitigation? Or is if someone's going to provide mitigation, what could that?
I do not know where that application is that you've got. Chad, where is that?
This might be in reference to a major tree ordinance, which would be taken up by the Planning Commission. And that is on page two. Two of what? Let me just see, two of ordinance nine four two. So it's in this case and it's under section E.
But so we have not been given in any example of the application that's talking about.
No, I think he's talking about the ordinance, so.
No, he's talking the application, right?
Yeah, this is what I picked up this weekend. I just, I saw that, I think it's a great idea, but I didn't know if it was really mandated.
Uh, yeah, this is a draft application having to do with the ordinance that we have here. Not sure you came in and got this from, yeah.
Well, we don't.
This is from the January third, twenty twenty four meeting. We had a draft application on there and what it's referring to. Just make sure. I believe is a section in the ordinance that you do have and we are not thinking. Under section E, granting a major tree removal permit show adjacent findings that following criteria are met.
Matt, I'm going to have to get back to you on that because I don't have.
May I?
May I? Yes, you may.
Okay. To cut down or remove more than five trees in a year, a major tree removal permit is required. That's how it's been for, for years and that criteria, the Planning Commission make that decision. And, and one of the things they consider when they're making the decision is mitigation. Like, are you going to, are you going to plant replacement trees for the trees you're removing? And so, yes, staff, when we were drafting sort of an initial draft application form, included a prompt that would help applicants respond to that criteria so that the Planning Commission could make an informed decision. The feedback or this comment raises to me the idea that when we continue working on the draft application form, we need to be clear about what information we're asking from people when they're applying to remove more than five trees versus what information we're asking for when they just want a simple minor tree removal permit, because you wouldn't have to respond to that question to get a minor tree removal permit. You can do, you could do no mitigation and, you know, staff will, will just issue you the permit once you fill out the form.
And for those who'll be looking for that, that's ordinance nine four two, section D, lines three and four.
So, so I'm allowed to ask a third question right now, which I wait to hear.
Wait, you could do it now? Oh, to Cam?
Yeah, because it seemed like members of the public might express concerns one way or the other based on.
It's just specific to this question. I think it might, it will help me understand his, I think his question, what he's asking for. So Garrett, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I'm looking at the January packet that we received from you and the tree cutting permit application that was attached to that. Was, was that a draft of what you were imagining we would put out for both? It would, it would cover both a single tree and more than five trees?
Yes, and it was meant for just illustration purposes on where we were headed. But we've been waiting for the ordinance to be adopted before we actually finish the application form.
Okay.
Yes, but it was intended to cover both situations.
And, and you're making a note that should the ordinance be passed, that would be, that would need to be started back?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Great. All right, did that answer your question, Matthew?
Yeah, it's a major outlier, yeah.
Okay. Bill Courtney, name and address, please.
Bill Courtney, my address locally here is eight one five South Ocean Avenue. And my other address is three nine six three Southeast Lakefront, Milwaukee, Oregon. I wanted to know if you go through the process, if someone has minor tree removals on their property, because it seems like it's different now. They, they just have to fill out an application and the city administrator is not going to come out and take a look at the trees. How are you going to know whether someone's not being honest as far as the dimensions and the size of the tree? How is that going to work? Are you going to take their word for it? Because there are a lot of people, some people may not be upfront about, you know, small trees are going to cut down versus larger trees that need to be stopped. What are you going to do on that? How do you?
The intention is to go out once we receive the permit to go out and verify the tree sizing.
Okay, and are you going to be the only one? Because I know Sharon Klafter and this winter said that you probably should have more help. You should have a committee to, to help you, you know, get around town. Is that going to happen?
We've got some planning staff, Angelina would assist me with that, but her and I will be the primaries.
Okay, and then the other thing I had, if I have a few trees that I want to take down on my property, can I do it or do I have to get a certified arborist?
My understanding of the ordinance is that you would be able to do it.
Okay, because, you know, we had, we cut down trees in the dunes and we have to get a certified arborist and they're much more expensive than if I do it myself or if I gets, you know, like a, I found a husband, wife team up in Ocean Park and they've cut some trees down for me on my property and it's been a lot less expensive. So I'm glad that I can cut down or get a cheaper.
Not necessarily on the dunes, Mr. Courtney.
Yeah, I know.
You would still need to go through a different process on the dunes because that's a different ordinance.
Right.
But on your own property.
Right.
Uh, if the trees were undersized, then you wouldn't even need a permit. You could cut those down. I would not be verifying those. I would only verify that in which you actually filled out a permit for, to remove larger trees. So this wouldn't prevent you from cutting down something that's smaller, say a six inch or a smaller circumference tree.
So I don't even need to fill out a form?
Not according to this ordinance, no.
Excuse me, what's your address?
Eight one five South Ocean Avenue.
So you're south of D Street?
Yeah, we're at the very end of South Ocean Avenue.
Okay, you realize that from your property line there, out sixty feet? Okay, from your property line west until, until you get to the, basically the Gerhart boundary, that's, that's city property.
Right, yeah, I've known that for.
Forever.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, what I'm finding about is the part of the trees that are behind our house and they're not part of the dunes, it's private property. As far as what this new, new ordinance applies.
So they're on, they're on your one hundred foot checkback?
Yeah.
Okay. That it?
Yeah.
That's okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so that's it with the neutral comments. The advocate's rebuttal is non-existent.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Don Frank has his hand up.
Don Frank has got his hand up? Are you neutral, Don?
I'm a neutral, Mayor.
Okay, then please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, my name is Don Frank. I live at nine eighty-eight Summit Avenue in Gerhart, Oregon. What I would just like to say is as a, I'm a member of the Planning Commission and I would like to back up a couple of things. One, that what Garrett Phillips has said about the Planning Commission's efforts over the last year and a half to address this concern as far as looking into the tree issue. And the Planning Commission did meet eight different times to look at this. And what you're seeing is the results of that. It is true that their changes are specifically about allowing the city to document the tree cutting process in, in town and how they can respond to requests and complaints and just create a database of what exactly is happening. Uh, we also did change the circumference from the diameter for ease in that way. Added to that, nothing else has really changed. The five trees or less is the same as it was before. But I, I'd also like to just clarify a couple of questions, like my neighbor Angela Sidlow specifically asked the council if it reply, if it applies to the riparian area. The answer is no. The riparian area is a special zone like the dunes of the gentleman that just before me said. So it does not apply to the riparian area. It only applies to your property that is outside of that area. I'm probably the first person in this town that did apply for a major permit through the city because we had hazardous trees, which were actually on city property but affected our property. Part of that entanglement was just the process of trying to figure out how do we manage this kind of thing? And through the Planning Commission process, through working with the staff, Chad and Angelina, we came up with a solution. Part of that solution to remove five trees was to replant some other trees, which we have one year to do so. So sometimes in Gerhart, which is a semi-rural community, we do want to maintain that. Sometimes some trees may and will come down. Sometimes some trees will be replanted. So the tree ordinance, as it's written right now, doesn't change the character of Gerhart. The city would just like to know what's happening. So, and Ms. Mansell, I agree with you, like coming up with a list of invasive species is harder. There's probably a lot more than that, to be honest, too. So I'm not so sure that those, limiting those three is actually the answer. But I just wanted to put my two cents in there and that you know, as a planning commissioner, to clarify some answers and in our individual case, the process worked. And I'm happy to report that we're moving forward with that. So that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. All right. Is there any other hands up? Christine?
No.
Thank you. All right. Everyone's had their say, no one's waiting. Hearing's closed. Now we'll go to discussion. Now, in discussion, what are we, are we discussing? Um, what has been proposed as an amendment to this? Are we just discussing nine four two in its entirety right now? And we wait until the end of the meeting? Is that how we're going to do this?
I think so, but I'll let the attorney answer that question. Yeah, so what could happen is we knew that there were some potential amendments that might be made. And so a red line was prepared. If someone wants to make a motion that this ordinance be amended to be consistent with the red lines, then at that point, that would be the discussion. If there's, if people want to discuss the ordinance that was proposed by the Planning Commission, that would be, that, that would normally be what would happen. And I just, I would like to ask for a point of clarification from the council because people use the term city trees. And I'd like to point something out that is different in Gerhart than in every other jurisdiction I've represented, which is in every other jurisdiction that I have represented, trees that were in the public right of way but adjacent to the homes. The, the homeowner has been responsible for those trees, even if they were in unimproved right of way. It was Mayor Widdup that believed that the trees that are in the unimproved right of way were the responsibility of the city. And so we have a system where as in Mr. Frank's, Commissioner Frank's case, those, those were in the cities right of way, but they've been planted by the prior owner of his house. And he volunteered to pay for the maintenance of those trees that Arborists said were, were dangerous. So in the past, the city has been responsible for that. And that was an item I wanted to fly. I believe that Mayor Cochran had also done it consistently with what Mayor Widdup had done, per interpretation, instruction to staff. And I don't know if we had any issues under Mayor Ratahn, I can't recall. But when we were having this discussion with the Planning Commission, that was something that I had flagged. It's not, it's not part of the, it's not part of the ordinance, but it came up again this evening. And so it's, it's getting some clarification if it actually is in, whether it makes difference to the city right of way or city-owned property like a park. And, and also if, what system the council would want for, if it is in city right of way or city-owned property, then how, how would it be? Would we get an arborist? Would he get an arborist to concern citizen? Would we get an arborist? Would he get an arborist to concern citizen and then getting a little more clarification on that? So that doesn't necessarily need, need to be part of this ordinance, but it's certainly adjacent to that and would probably be part of a future application that our, um, our head planner would put together. So I'm going to flag it here. We want to give you an answer.
Well, yeah, I said that, you know, this tree happens to be on the adjacent property, the almost adjacent on the, on the, on the other side of the ridge path into my side. So I don't see where responsibility is mine.
So is it the city's property? Is it the city's property or is it, it's the city's property and not the adjacent property owner's property? I believe it's on the ridge path. Oh, okay, so it is our property.
Okay.
So my, my concern is that, you know, if we have another old seven storm or something like that, it blows over and lands on Evar's route. Destroys his home or something like that. I mean, there's one down on, on Woodland right here. The, the west side of Woodland, it's a dead spruce tree. You know, it's going to fall over on Carol Price's place. I mean, what, whose, whose responsibility is it and who's going to pay, who's going to be the ones that's going to take the financial hit for it? If, I mean, if it falls on Evar's property, he can sue the city.
It also, also addressed in, you know, I, I, I realize if, if I'm in the right of way over, over street or something, I've been taking care of city trees, but not I'm not going to take care of the reef path, you know?
That's sacred. That's almost as sacred ground as, as you know, a park, you know, where you stop, you know?
So, I mean, my question, do you hear this? I mean, whose responsibility is it? So as a general rule, cities have, uh, sovereignty, but if the city's become, if the city is aware of a dangerous condition and creates a dangerous condition, um, then so if we're aware, then they probably have grounds to sue us. Whether we're going to win or not is going to be fact specific. If we create the danger ourselves, then we're, we're looking at liability. So it, it is would, would we have a problem? We might. It's a fact-specific inquiry. So if we had an arborist that came out and said the tree was fine, you know, we should be able to reasonably rely on that. If we had an arborist came out and said the tree was not fine and then we failed to act, we're, we have, you know, yeah, stronger case.
Also, at one point, the city agreed that, that they will their trees should come down and all of a sudden somebody, a neighbor comes to the city manager and says, oh, no, 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 I love my tree, I love my tree, you know? And next thing you come out, the, the egg is gone, you know?
Well, I never worked with city manager McAnally, but my understanding is he didn't tend to document things in writing. So, um, there's probably not, probably not a file there.
Probably plenty of people were hurting them.
Well, here, here's what happens. I mean, you see it all, all the time on the, on the, on the highway right of ways, right? The state of Oregon wants the illusion of of, you know, Oregon's green and, you know, we're timber friendly and everything like that. But on the other side of their, of their right of way is private timber company. So the private timber company cuts their, their, their trees down, right? They, they've taken all the wolf trees. Basically, they're, have the roots that are supporting the system, right? And all of a sudden, we have a storm and all the trees blow over on the highway. Okay, now this is, this is, I mean, the guy cleared the lot on the other side of the ridge path, took all the wolf trees out, trees that were protecting this one. And now this one here is standing alone and it doesn't have the root system in order to be able to support itself if there happens to be a major storm.
That's just a fact. This, uh, also four years ago, fifteen years ago, that tree was like twelve inches in diameter and now it's three feet in diameter, you know? It's a major tree standing by itself, you know? Leaning right at me now.
Okay. Let's move, um, on to what we're doing with this ordinance and bars, we will get to it.
Yeah, let's, let's look at it, you know?
I will. So the idea is is there a motion?
I, I move, I, I feel that the document, as it came from the Planning Commission, left out some very important items. So that's why I went through line by line and put in some things that I thought weren't important for the document. That would include, for instance, the heritage tree definition. Um, it included trees in the riparian zones and metlins and their buffers. Uh, and then there were smaller changes that I put in there. I said, for instance, that replacement trees must measure a minimum of three inches in di- in diameter. That's about three inches in diameter. Um, at four and a half feet tall, because somebody could come along and say, well, I'm going to replace the trees that it cut down and they can put a stick in. I mean, it doesn't have to really be a tree per se. So I just made that a little clearer. Um, those were the biggest changes, um, that I made. Uh, so I would move that and unfortunately, this came, this hasn't even gone to the public for consideration, which I've been liking to. Uh, and this came to city council members, uh, just a few days ago, which is not, was not my intention at all. I wanted it to come to all of us. Uh, a couple of weeks ahead of time, so at least it could be read through and thought about and considered and that we could discuss it at this meeting. So that didn't happen, uh, for various reasons. And so I would move that we have time to not only let the public see this, but let the counselors give it some more consideration as well. Um, that's my take on it.
So you would like to, uh?
She would like to reopen the record. She would like to reopen the record and continue it to the, it sounds like the September meeting.
Is that your motion?
Yeah, that's reasonable.
I'll, I'll second that.
Is there any discussion about moving it to September so we can all take a look at it in the public and see this? No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All those against?
I think this is nonsense.
Oh, it's a yea or nay situation, Russell. Nay, thank you. All right, let's move to September.
You know, Mr. Mayor, may I clarify a couple of things? And I'm sorry, Sharon.
I personally want me to go first.
Well, I just want to clarify with you here a couple of procedural questions. Are we going to have another hearing then in September? Yeah. Are we going to put the red line version, uh, online and, uh, make it available to the public to see as well? Yeah, as it is. Okay. Right, and just to clarify something. This is the first time I have ever prepared amendments prior to a hearing. The, the amendments are generally made at the hearing, but because we have specific amendments that were made, um, uh, that the red lines, Garrett and I prepared red lines. And the reason that I held it, um, was because I, and I told Chad this, so it's not Chad's fault, it's mine, because I told him to hold this, not put it in the packet. And because they need, these needed to be, in my mind, adopted at the meeting to do otherwise, it would seem like the city council was debating the amendments outside of the public hearing. And that was the last perception I wanted people to have. I wanted people to understand that what we had was the Planning Commission recommendation, which was what we have for all of these ordinances. And that we were preparing the amendments for just ease of use so that they could be introduced. I had no idea whether there would be votes to, for the amendment or not. Um, but if there was, then my legal advice was going to be to continue it to the time started and to reopen the record. That's why Chad and staff did what they did. They did it under my instructions. So to the extent it's almost void, it's me.
Can I ask a question here?
Yeah.
Um, so if, if one of us disagreed with, it's, so basically what's come to us now is a document that was submitted to us from the Planning Commission, which again, I, I agree with Don. They spent a lot of time on this. They worked very hard on this and this apparently clearly is not an easy thing to, to, um, work on or not as easy as one might think. Um, so they did a lot of good work on it. Um, would anybody be able to change this document or their proposal to us before it came to us, before it came in our hands? Would that have been appropriate?
I mean, somebody could have brought it as their public testimony and said, I prepared amendments here or, uh, uh, Ms. Mansell could bring us and say, hey, there are these four other trees that are very destructive and, yeah.
I've been on the council. Like, if I had said, well, I disagree with this and I want you to insert this, when would be the appropriate time for me to do that? Would it be here in the city council meeting or would it be going to staff ahead of time? And, and saying, I want you to change what the Planning Commission did?
Um, i- if someone wanted to submit it to staff and just say, hey, this is what I'm, this is what I think, then sure, they give us a heads up so that we're not wordsmithing in the meeting, but I wouldn't want any counselors discussing the concepts because again, this conversation needs to happen in a public hearing in front of the public. Um, because this is obviously an issue of importance to a lot of people.
Okay.
Is that all, Chad?
That's all I had, yes.
Okay. Uh, may I just say one more thing? Is that okay or?
Yes.
I mean, I can wait till September, but I'd rather say it now.
No, you can go ahead and say it.
Okay, so what I wanted to say is, you know, I'm, I've only been on the city council for a year, so I'm really new to this process. And I'm sure I'm, you know, going to make mistakes and I keep calling the Oregon Ethics Board to make sure I'm not making mistakes. And anyway, I'm, I'm learning. But one thing I do know, and that is that our mandate as city counselors is to carry out the comprehensive plan. Uh, from what I understand from citizens who I've talked to, the comprehensive plan is very, very important to a lot of citizens in Gearhart. One of the tenets of the comprehensive plan is to conserve, preserve and protect open space, scenic areas, historic and natural resources in and around the Gearhart community for future generations. My feeling and what I've seen over the past seven years since I've been noticing and documenting, I've noticed more than two hundred larger trees cut down in Gearhart. Over two hundred larger trees cut down in Gearhart, including a few in the riparian zone. So my feeling about this is that we are not in the city has not been doing
Can I interrupt you for just a minute? I'm going to make a motion that we reopen this. Can we reopen this because this is going I'm done. What she's saying is leading to, well, yeah, that I have some root, some things that I would like to say in
I mean, my strong preference would be that we do this with community input in September.
Okay.
And I just want to point out that with our comprehensive plan and with our land use goals, we're constantly balanced, balancing the state's requirements, um, and our goals around growth with our goals around preservation. And I know that that's also of community concern. So I'm sure we have some public comments on those topics.
All right, so we are going to grant continuance under ORS one ninety-seven point seven six three six until September city council, prior to the September city council meeting at six o'clock. Hearing is closed. Now, we're going to, um, move right into the city council meeting as soon as I change all my papers. Okay, is there any conflict of interest? We are already that was in city council meeting, I'm sorry.
There you go. It's all enough.
Thank you, boss. All right, is there a declaration of any conflict of interest from the council? Okay. Someone give me a motion for the regular meeting minutes, please. July third, two thousand twenty-four.
I move that we accept the regular meeting at the city council Wednesday, July third, two thousand twenty-four.
I, I would like to third Fisher Freshman page four. Sir, I'll give you a second. Uh, I make a motion that be prove it with your change as I propose on page four.
Okay, where on page?
On page four, about halfway down the discussion paragraph. Um, it says, Counselor Gould clarified why specific counselors were selected.
Okay.
Um, and I don't recollect that I clarified why specific counselors were selected. I, I, if I, if I said that, I, that certainly was not my intent. Um, because I feel that all counselors are equally capable of serving on this. So I don't feel like that's, I, I would like to have that struck. I don't think I clarified why specific counselors were selected. Um, or we clarify that, um, specific, only limited number of, of counselors are able to work on a committee outside of this because of forum issues. And if we were to have every meeting be a public meeting, we wouldn't need to be able to have a forum on every single one of those meetings in the voice. We'd have to counsel those. As I recall that discussion, so I don't I don't know how is best to handle that, but I, I feel like that doesn't the, the context of that, I, I don't.
Okay, well, as, um, clarified by Counselor Gold Jewel, I have a, uh, motion to approve. Can I get a second? What?
She said she said.
I'll second with, with that correction, but that just
Oh, you? I'm sorry, Rita. I'm so sorry. Right, okay, then. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right. Someone give me a motion for July twenty-fourth executive session, please?
I move we accept the, uh, minutes from the executive session of city council Wednesday, July twenty-fourth. Q O two four.
I second that.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Someone give me a motion for the work session July thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Um, I'll give you a motion to approve the minutes from the work session in the city council on Tuesday, July thirty, twenty twenty-four. But I also have a correction on page three. Um, on this, on the second paragraph. He then asked about the interview questions to which he shared, um, the word they. The word haven't.
Uh, can you, where was that again?
Uh, on this, on the second paragraph, skip the first line and go to the, the next paragraph.
Which page?
Mayor Smith.
Page two?
I'm sorry, from page three.
Page three? Okay.
So the paragraph that starts with Mayor Smith. Go down one, two, three, four lines. And between the word shared and haven't, I would insert the word they.
Do I take it?
I will. I have a question about this, about these, um, minutes or for the work session. Um, we've seen the, uh, contract between the Clash Group and City of Gearhart. We see, do we have a copy of that?
Yes, and I believe that, uh, that was approved for the issue by the city council.
So we have seen that contract. I didn't have time to go look for it.
Yeah.
So my question is, does it specifically say in the contract that Clash is to report to you? Is that the word?
Is that the wording?
I'm not sure exactly.
Yeah, I'm not either, so I'm I'm wondering about that sentence or phrase in here.
I, well, it was said in the meeting. But yeah, I'm not sure. I can do some research for you, but I believe there uh a similar person reported here from the Klosch Group on administrative duties and things like that, but I can't say for sure. I don't recall.
Yeah, I mean, I'll try and think that out, but uh I was just wondering about the wording of that.
Okay, did we get a second? Did we get a motion?
Yeah, with a minute. Made a motion to amend with that with that correction on on page three, Sharon, did you have any amendments you wanted to make?
Uh, no, I I can't read the contract.
Okay, you'll second? All those in favor say aye.
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 I can do that, sure.
Okay, everyone's got a copy of the planning commission? Is there any questions for? Chad? Okay, moving on, it's the mayor's report and I'm gonna tell you that I was gone for almost half the month because I was on so-called rounds. Had a great time. And I did attend the Javadi uh town hall with Alan Seaver and um Mark Uli?
Kurul.
Kurula.
Wayler.
Thank you. Wayler.
Spanish, wayler.
Yeah. All right, and um it was a great time. I actually talked to Javadi about our water rights. I met with him back in January of twenty-four during the city at Salem. And I will be meet needing him again this January to talk to him about our water rights. Um. He's on board. He's still got our pamphlet that I made up. It's cute little thing with all the information that we have on water rights and why we need them enough. I also went to the small cities uh meeting that uh Gerhardt was full co-sponsor for because of Dana and her participation in it. And uh it was a very good meeting. I enjoyed it a lot and I hope I can uh not be gone for every other meeting that they have because it's that's what I am, I'm gone.
And it was nice live.
Yeah, it's a nice life. Very nice, nice meeting room. Very nice.
Thank you.
Okay, council reports, I'm gonna go to Preston.
Um, the Klosch Group, we we uh as far as the police and fire uh building, um, it, we have, the mayor has appointed uh an architectural crew committee. And uh basically, I think they hire in ways until um you guys have all your expertise for architectural.
The selection committee, I'm not part of that and they are uh they've already had a meeting, right?
Today.
Today, right, and they've got their work cut out for them like a, like a a hundred and fifty pages of technical paperwork they have to read in six days. Ooh, thank goodness, ooh. Anyway, go ahead, Preston, I'm sorry.
So I mean, basically, you know, we're 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 charging forward as, you know, as slowly as as it needs to be, and I think the next thing is what public hearings after the selection committee?
Uh, correct, the selection and improvement process will continue. We're gonna meet on the fifteenth of this month, actually, that day is changed to give us a little bit more time to go through. Uh, and I'll update a little bit more on that here in a little bit, and then after that, I will have a recommendation to the City Council uh in uh April.
When does the public process meeting?
Uh, we have the uh first town hall uh coming up next Monday.
Okay.
Six P M, so we expect all of you folk to be there.
And all your friends. And their friends. Uh, Rita, please.
You scared the pisses out of me. Okay, so I did attend the Clatsup Regional Housing Task Force meeting uh on July twenty-fourth and they talked a lot about the uh housing needs analysis for planning for the housing for the next twenty years. And although I learned a lot, what's really good about this particular housing task force is that there's representatives from every city, uh you know, Warranton, Astoria, Cannon Beach and the county, and there's commissioners, there's planners. So it's, you learned a lot about all the different communities and what they plan for housing and it's hard to plan twenty years in the future, but they're taking that on. So that was kind of cool. And then I had a talk with Chad and we agreed that our bench committee, God love us, is done with our job and we've done a good job and now Chad and City Hall are gonna take over and start placing benches within the city limits, not necessarily in the dunes yet because we don't have all the permits. But uh I want to thank the bench committee, uh councillor Sharon, thank you so much. Kathy Zimmerman and I, we did a lot of work and thank you, Chad, for taking the breast of it over. That's all I have.
Okay. Sharon.
Okay, um, for the beach cleanup, uh on July fifth, I was stationed at uh Wellington and by the time I got there, a gentleman and his elderly father were coming up from Little Beach and had picked up two garbage bags of trash. Uh, not big bags, like about that sized bags, and said that it was clean. And I'm like, wow, they said, yeah, there really wasn't much trash. And then one of them ventures the opinion that the high tide had probably taken one of the trash out. Anyway. Uh, I attended the Clatsup County update on um the repeal of measure one ten. Um, so our police force uh has a little more power, which I'm looking forward to, um, and the FEMA uh stuff that's coming down the pipe with the flood plain rules. And I also went to the League of Oregon Cities, uh which among other things uh addressed the recreational immunity and where that uh ruling is at, which at this point it does protect us for trails and access points, but it's uh it uh sunsets in two oh two five, so uh it's we're we're gonna need public support and comment on that. Um, and then they talked about the housing infrastructure monies that can be gotten. Uh, and they talked about the one-time uh extension of the urban growth boundaries. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Dana?
Um, so yeah, uh it was a fairly busy month, uh and corresponded with a number of citizens to discuss discuss issues surrounding the public safety building, um the proposed tree ordinance amendments and also postal issues are still a major concern for folks. Um, and what I find that in many ways, a lot of all of these issues have some overlap and so we should, I I feel we should be considering all of these things when we're making our decisions and uh we should be playing chess, not checkers, when we're when we're making our decisions. Um, I want to thank everyone who's reached out to share uh constructive suggestions. Uh, we're also receiving a lot of criticism and that's okay. Um, but constructive suggestions uh are fully welcome because creativity is gonna be, in my opinion, our path going forward because we do have some challenges ahead of us. Um, I attended the C I S training about the recent Supreme Court decision in the Grant's past case about unhealth camping. Um, and although if you if you've been watching the news and you know that the Supreme Court made a decision on this, you may think that uh things have changed, but they have not really changed that much in the state of California because um the the decisions were codified a couple of years ago and so now we have, we are still following the same rules with with few changes. I also participated in the July fourth festivities. I want to thank you to the fire department, to everybody who participated in making the parade great, the police department for keeping us safe. Um, for the people that organized the July fifth dance, that was a lot of fun and it was the first time that I've been out there. I'm I'm u- I'm usually out there for the cleanup, but that's the first time I was there for the setup. And I think that was probably even more fun for me than the actual dance, so I want to thank you um to the people that put that together for us. It was, it was great. Um, again, shout out to our emergency responders who worked with other emergency responders throughout the county to come up with an if-then plan, if this happens, then we'll do that. I think they kept us safe and I think that they got on a lot of things that could have spiraled out of control very quickly. We learned some things and I think that you also had a meeting that you're gonna talk about where you decided some corrective action for the future and um some pathways for about that. Uh, met with the elected officials in Clatsup County at the elected officials meeting and yes, as Sharon talked about, uh they talked about the the changes to one ten, but also um talked about FEMA buy-off. That was also a major conversation in the Small Cities League of Oregon City meeting in Seaside. It's the FEMA buy-off is a major concern. Um. And we should all be watching that and considering that also in everything that we're considering, whether it be the tree ordinance or whatever, because this might have implications for our our city. We as I've talked to Chad already and Garrett, they are already working on and I didn't know this, but I imagine Peter probably hasn't been inside into it too. So there's a lot to learn there. Um. Tended both walk-throughs of the existing police and fire stations that were open to public this last month and they were open to other counselors. Um, approximately six citizens attended the second walkthrough and that's just what we had. That's what I have.
Thank you, Dana. All right. Chief Gregory?
Good evening. Uh, the Fourth of July went relatively well, I believe. We had our all three officers on and that was very helpful. Um, we still have to deal with juveniles and the M I P situation, uh but we attacked it pretty early. And a lot of running from us, but we were able to grab one or two here and there uh and and issue citations, uh so that was good. Um, we ended up leaving probably around three A M. I think I worked a seventeen-hour day that day, so we were tired by the end of it, but it went well. Uh. As far as stats go, uh we had of note this month, we had one solved case, one sex crime case that was solved. Very good, very good. Good. Uh, ninety-four traffic stops were made, twenty-four citations written. Uh, we have three active cases at this time, uh that from this month. Uh, that were better pending. Uh, we paid ten total total custody arrests throughout the month. As of right now, July, uh I'm sorry, as of July thirty-first, we have three hundred, we had three hundred and twelve case files. Um, the same stat in twenty twenty-three, that same title was a hundred and ninety-six. So we, well, over a hundred more case files we've taken this year. Um, if you add in line entries, which are involved in with the police, so we don't actually take a case file, but we are involved in something uh under being filled interviews to uh traffic stops, we're at uh three hundred and twenty-two this year and that gives us six hundred and thirty-four action items uh as of this year so far. So we're we're absolutely being more proactive and being busy uh and we're getting feedback from you guys.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Anyone got any comments for? All right.
I have a comment.
Okay.
Just seeing you guys out and uh is just a wonderful thing.
Thank you, that's our goal, uh presence.
Makes a difference. Okay, we're gonna move over to Chief Como.
Thank you, sir. Couple of things I have for you guys this evening. Uh, we'll first go over the stats from July, from last month. With a total ninety-three calls for service, uh forty-nine of those was in the city limits and thirty-two was in the district. We sent out aid twelve times, six listed seaside, uh structure fires, trash fires, brush fires and a couple of times they needed extra manpower like that. There's three structured cars in Astoria. Uh, wanted to note that with those, we don't automatically go to Astoria. Our first step is to go to Warranton and back to Warranton. Moves out, it's like the ripple effect. From there, we did go to Warranton once, first structure fire for there. Uh, but that was the one that we know, there was the big, uh, I'll bring the helicopter. Uh, handled with one, uh eight we sent um on Saddle Mountain, you know, we're gonna Saddle Mountain rescues, we just sent a few of our people because it's a a faraway call and they need so much manpower to rescue the person left them bringing down off the trail. Uh, we have one mobilization last month um with the state and we received a once for a wildland fire. Um, how that compares to the previous year, um or July twenty-four, July twenty-four, we had a hundred and fourteen total calls, we had a few less calls this year um, the total of July, um but we are at the end of July, twenty calls ahead of last year in total uh with that. And then for July fourth stats, uh we had thirty-five track incidents, actually incidents, uh fire incidents we made, log logs for and fire calls for, thirty-five of those. We had twenty-three firefighters on standby that day, um some of whom came and went. Uh, ten of those firefighters pulled a twenty-hour shift here uh until four A M. They got here at eight A M. Um, we gave out fifteen hundred hot dogs. With that, uh some miscellaneous info, we had, it was at least fifteen additional um incidents, um they're kind of action items, as Chief Gregory said, we didn't fully make calls for them, um such as one of them was a lost person. Um, the person came, said, my daughter brought friends with her, we can't find her. Uh, through conversation, he showed us a picture, we able to resolve the situation right there, so we didn't make a call for it because we handled it in a couple of minutes. We put out well over fifty campfires on the beach. Um, and that's after the high tide came up and out. And that's only the fires that was near the dunes and the dune grass. We don't put out every single fire, just the hazard ones. If we don't put them out, um we usually get called back anyways to them and then they have a hazard, they could blow the embers into the dune grass and stuff, nice. Um, so unless somebody has any questions, that's what I have for you. Yes, you.
Um, I had a question from a citizen and I didn't know how to answer it. Uh, when you go when you're aid for a fire situation, do you guys automatically suit up for that?
If we're going to just stand by that station, so there's a couple of different kinds of aid. Um, if we're going into the scene, the incident, yes, we'll suit up for that. If we're going like, um, the three times that we went for, it's called, we ate Astoria because it's their call. But we went to Warranton, we bring our gear with us because we're responding to calls for Warranton as Warranton fired up. So we have it with us, but depending on how we go is is it down, so.
Thank you.
Great, anyone else? Thank you, chief.
Thank you, sir.
Master of money.
Hey, so the new fiscal year and budget has rolled into place and overall, our beginning fund balances are higher than we budgeted and that were anticipated, which is always a really nice thing and provides just a little bit of a financial safety net for us. A short-term transient room tax continues to be strong and just as kind of a comparison, because it is a really important uh revenue source, it's about down about five thousand dollars, which doesn't necessarily mean significant because sometimes um just the way people pay and just the the way things work out, it might just be a a technicality, but we'll track it and watch it. I'm not alarmed. Uh, the city also received a funding check to support the fire department staffing grant, so that's in there in our news in July. Uh, I also uh made three transfers that were approved in the budgeting tran uh process. Uh, these transfers were done immediately. Normally we wait and we have some financial targets, so we don't do transfers they usually go to reserve funds. Uh, but these uh particular transfers um needed to be done immediately because they were for grant funds that we had received in previous years and they had rolled over and we are going to complete the projects uh in different funds that we had put them in, so. There was a transfer for eighteen thousand six hundred from the general fund, non-departmental, to Fund Forty-One Beach, the bench program. Uh, that was for a grant that we had received and we had put it in the general fund. We had spent a little bit of the money restoring uh a couple of benches, but there was some money left and so the bench program now has eighteen thousand six but there was some money left and so the bench program now has uh eighteen thousand six hundred dollars in it. Uh, there was both a two hundred and thirty thousand from the general fund non-departmental and a twenty-five thousand dollar from from Fund Fifty, the road district, um, that we transferred to Fund Seventy-One, the water reserve fund. Um, those funds are from the American Rescue Fund grant. We've actually received those over two years and have not spent any of those monies, but we transferred those to the water reserve. We do anticipate, we need to allocate those by December and we have some water infrastructure projects that we hope to um have lined out by December. We can spend the money later, but we have to allocate it by December. So those have been transferred uh to make sure we have those in the right funds. Uh, in expenditures, the annual SAFE workers' comp payment was made. Uh, these expenditures are distributed throughout all salary accounts, so under the First and All Services, and it's for the entire year. Uh, the premium cost did come in lower than we projected. Um, SAFE is a relatively new company to us, so our experience modifier, which is how many accidents and how many um how much is spent out, uh, is still undetermined for us, so it's harder to gauge. Um, we only have a little bit of historical reference for them, but um it didn't cost us this much and we also get a prepaid discount for paying early. Uh, the Fire Department had their annual payment in purchase services, ten thirteen seventy-two uh for communication services that they get through FirstNet, um, also they're partners with A T and T. Uh, interest payments were made in the water treatment bonds uh in Fund Twenty, so we have to make our one payment in July um to offset the interest and then we have another payment towards the end of the year. There was also a payment in Fund Seventy-One Water Reserve, which was approved by the council in April for groundwater modeling services. So they have submitted uh an invoice, that's our first payment uh to them so far. Uh, please note that several expenditure line items have already exceeded their budget. Um, ten seventeen thirty-nine planning postage was due to the volume of required public notices and code enforcement notifications. Uh, we've seen a large increase and we uh didn't anticipate those expenditures quite that high, but it shouldn't be a problem. Thirty-three zero zero three part-time help was due to the fire hydrant summer maintenance staff needing some additional time to finish the project. So every summer we hire um an individual, a a outside uh part-time individual just to go around and maintain all of our fire hydrants, they paint them and make sure that they're clear for the Fire Department and they needed a little bit of additional time than we had budgeted for, so it was a little bit over. And we added a new account in port um with our new uh enthusiastic police force uh out there proactively uh helping us uh be safe. It has increased our court, which uh there's a lot of people who do not show up to court. There's a lot of legal notices that go along with court. So we added a postage line for court, so we can just keep track, so we know where funds are going. Questions?
Um, so you're talking specifically about the mailers that we had sent out for this tree.
Yeah, this is the first time I've been here. Um, normally you only have to send flyers to a specific within so many feet, but we send them to every property owner because.
So the question is, if we're going to do this again in September, are we going to have to re-mail again? Or are we going to, because this is just a continuation and everybody here who wanted to participate or feel, you've already moved away?
Right, so um if you continue the meeting to a time certain, then you don't have to re-notice. So we don't have to publish or mail. Um, and that's why it was so important we specified that it was our regularly scheduled September meeting that we were.
I just wanted to clarify that while we still had time to fix it during this meeting, we ran the spent line.
Right.
Any other questions?
Thank you. City attorney, Peter.
Well, I was here over the Fourth of July, began to and realized just how many people have my cell phone number because I was getting a lot of calls and I do not have police power. Um, but I then passed along all the tips to Chad so that they could go to the police and I could see our police running up on the beach and I could see kids that looked like they're twelve years old and even are probably older than that, running over the dunes uh away from the police. So um, very apparent to me that we need to expand the number of high schools and provide notice to beyond the usual suspects. Um, because apparently a bunch of kids from Tiger, then to Walton and and other suburbs were were here as well. So I think we'll do a more comprehensive uh information campaign with uh metro area high schools. Um, the Supreme Court case involving camping, the Grants Pass case has already been mentioned. Um, in addition to the Ninth Circuit rules we were under when our governor was the speaker, she had sponsored a bill um that said that that cities needed reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions that is still in effect, though that might be revisited in next session. Uh, I'm, our our current, our current ordinance, I think, seems to be working pretty well. Um, if we become aware of additional issues, there are some additional tweaks we can do to that now that we have the Supreme Court uh ruling. In addition to that case that came down pretty recently, there's another case that I want to mention called Sheets v. County of El Dorado, California. It is a case that involves exactions. Um, specifically a transportation system development fee, um, which was twenty-six thousand dollars for a double Y in uh the county of El Dorado. And that was struck down. Um, and really the takeaway, it's a, it is a, it's a fairly long opinion and it gets pretty complex, but the takeaway for me is that my recommendation is that we look at our fees and we also look at system development charges with our call plans. I want to make sure that those fees are really aligning with the um services that we're providing. I think they are, if anything, I think ours are, ours are low or we're not taking opportunities. Um, but we we need a contemporary, let's look at that in order to fully protect ourselves um under this kind of a change of law. It's consistent with the cases that we always talk about, um, Nolan, which is having a nexus between what you're doing and and what you're asking for. And then Nolan, which is the roughly proportionate test. Um, so so this, this makes it very clear that the roughly proportionate tax uh test isn't just tied to a specific unique exaction for a property that's, it's it's tied to a category of exactions like a single-family houseful pay X. So we need to really take a look at our fees. That would be my my strong recommendation to the council. Um, in addition to that, there is um the other fire departments are um in the county and and elsewhere around the state have adopted cost-based fees and rates for when they're responding outside of the city. So like if if they're rescuing hikers on Saddle Mountain, which is time-intensive and and uh pull people out of Gearheart, um, or they're responding to a car accident on the highway, um, that we would be able to get fees from um reasonable fees for what I would term extraterritorial activities. So we already get paid by the state of Oregon for common integration, but this would allow us to get um fees for other things as well. So that is, unless there's opposition from the council, um, that is something that I would like to kind of work up and and bring to a future meeting that the Fire Department made that request. So cup, that's kind of the the fees, we're probably going to be looking at at a lot of them in the next year um just to stay out of trouble and make sure we're we're collecting the the amounts that insurance companies would pay us, et cetera. So that's all I've got. And oh, and I should say then, first thing in the morning on the fifth, um, Chad and I drove around Gearheart, um, drove on the beach, talked to residents and are kind of troubleshooting through. Maybe we want temporary parking restrictions on certain streets. Um, maybe we want somebody making sure that the they're not taking their S-class Mercedes uh dap out onto the beach, you know, because then it's going to get dragged out, um, not under some power. And so just making sure that the vehicles that are going out there have the ability to not get in trouble. Um, and then there were a lot of, I think, parking. I know the parking issues because I've been walking around town, but um on the floor, but definitely some very impacted neighborhoods. So residents and their guests weren't able to maybe, they were having to park blocks away. So possibly a a temporary parking permit for certain neighborhoods, um, possibly some prohibitions on street parking. Those those are all conversations we'll have in public meetings with full um participation in the public. But yeah, we're gonna, there's some, I think there's some reasonable regulations that we can impose to help and make it easier for Chief and his officers to be there, Charles, and and also kind of liability things. And the parade was great, I thought. Thanks again.
Thank you, Peter. Chad, you're up.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor Council. So we'll go over the day-to-day meetings, uh, and we've had, I have my sheets in front of you. Code enforcement, we've been quite busy with. Um, one of note is that we send notice to most of the commercial businesses in Gearheart and on the highway that we are going to be going through and reviewing the site ordinance with them. We have a lot of little signs that are coming out. And so that may have been something that, or will be something that maybe some of these business owners contact you and work with what's going on. We have just kind of given them the ordinance and then let them know that we'll be reviewing some of these sites uh to make sure that they're in compliance, so we work on that next week, starting next week. It'll be a process that'll take us a few months for sure. Uh, as far as the city goes, things are running really smoothly, uh, not to jinx us, but the uh, we are fully staffed. We have a fantastic staff, things are moving along quite smoothly. They're doing a large uh amount of work. Summertime's been very busy with a lot of the uh part-timers, some timers, full-timers, all, you know, I think some of them have been meeting things here within the city and they've been handling that beautifully. Uh, I will again reiterate that Cork was quite busy on Monday. Uh, we did have a lot of those tickets, so there are some other added expenses that come along with enforcement. And uh so we're getting our heads wrapped around that, but I was very pleased to to see that work. And uh the Police Department, the judge, and our Minister of Portlet did a fantastic job. Uh, Chief Josh Como came back from his uh fourteen-day deployment uh fighting fires uh in Oregon, primarily on the eastern side of uh Oregon. This was a Conflagration Act, so it's basically the government uh of Oregon is stating that they need help and anybody who can send help, please do so. So our county as a whole sent out a strike team with five different vehicles and our chief was the task force unit leader on that. And they had a, uh, they they did a lot of work, they were safe, uh, no damage, no injury. And also of note with that, just to let you know, when our vehicles leave town, as soon as they leave town, that vehicle makes an hourly rate at these conflagration events. So during the fourteen-day uh uh stint that they were out with one of the vehicles and three of our firefighters, that vehicle that was out made uh approximately thirty thousand dollars as an hourly rate. That money will go under a reserve account for the upkeep and purchasing of future vehicles and upkeep of the current vehicles, uh, to which some of those money can be spent for new tires, oil change, that sort of thing, to keep them in. But that is a note. Also, uh, with the chief or any of our firefighters, if they are paid by the city, Gearheart leave, all of that uh salary is paid for by the state of Oregon. Uh, so they reimburse us after we make those payments, uh, with some complicated paperwork that Chief Josh and uh Ms. Justine take care of. And so uh it's a net savings, even though we are uh losing our chief for a couple of weeks. Uh, we are not paying them, so that works for uh the city as well. We're well covered with Division Chief Andy and then we also received a thirty-five thousand dollar grant to pay some of our volunteers to be here during the day to help respond to calls to make up for that uh difference in fire vibes. So I think we're well covered, a fantastic job. Uh, Public Works has been working on uh checking on lead uh connections to the water system. What we are doing is going through homes that were built for a certain date, uh, digging up the water meter a little bit, verifying the connection point of the water meter to your homes. Uh, and so far today, we have not found, last, in the last couple of days, we have, we have not found any lead uh in our system, so things are looking good. While they're doing this lead check, they're also replacing water meters. So if you see some activity in front of your home, that's what's going. Tennis court resurfacing is going on today. They uh pressure washed last week. Today they're painting the lines as they were before, no changes, same colors. And uh so they'll put those tennis courts back into brand-new shape. Uh, it'll be a few days before those courts, uh, the tennis and the pickleball courts are available for the public. Uh, so keep an eye on what's going on over there. Alex Hayes of Pacific Ace is doing the work he's done before. We're also doing this with some grant money that was written by city staff. Uh, they received a grant that has that stuff, so the city's not that necessary.
Any more thought to sound mitigating fencing over there?
Yeah, we looked at, uh, there's two things going on, so the the trees, the vegetation and things like that. We're looking at potentially doing some uh thinning because some of it's getting really thick and we're considering that. Uh, did we get that out there? We did get some quotes on the sound-detening material that can be put on the fencing. Um, the persons of the professionals that we talked to said that it's quite expensive and it wasn't. It was seventeen thousand to put around the fencing. Uh, I've been talking to the mayor a little bit about that, there might be some other areas I think, or ways to spend money that would be a little less expensive. But also it seems like the sound-detening material and everything that they put up is really not been successful in other places as well. So we're monitoring that. We haven't taken any um complaints of that lately. Uh, with the plaintiffs that are going on, but we have had some concerns, so I'll keep it firmly on that. Water rights application, uh, the water rights application is nearing completion and currently being reviewed internally by city staff. Uh, our plan is to have the draft, uh, the rest of the draft coming to us here the end of this week or beginning of next. Um, we've been making some changes to the application that they had applied for. Once they get everything submitted to W R D and receive their initial comments, we'll have a better understanding of what scenarios they would like to see in the law. Example would be drought scenario, ten to twenty-year projection scenarios and such. This will streamline the review process, save us time, frustration, and some money. So that is moving forward. Uh, it looks like with regards to potential impacts on my uh Neocoxi Creek, that there's been some positive figures that have come in from those preliminary initial uh number runs on that. So nothing is looking uh terrible, it's acting as it's supposed to and uh no major concerns. So I'll let you know more as that process goes forward. Building permits uh are down a little bit. Um, as far as uh quantity uh of building permits, the last year of July was quite slow, similar to this year. Uh, last year August picked up, so far we haven't picked up as much, so things are a little bit slower on the building front. Uh, as a reminder, Town Hall, six P M. on Monday. Uh, we're going to introduce the clash group and the procedures that we're using to move forward with that project, uh, which will include information on uh how the public will be involved moving forward and some architecture information. Uh, how we are actually uh looking at hiring the architects. Uh, we'll discuss that at the meeting a little bit as well. I, Fourth of July, I I won't kill this one, but we did do a hot wash after the Fourth of July event. We kept a lot of notes and things that we could improve upon, uh, some safety features, some communication issues, garbage issues. All in all, things went really well, but, uh, the staff thinks that we could do a few things better, so we made our notes. We'll keep those and then next year we will go at that again. Uh, FEMA buyout, the FEMA changes that are around here have got a lot of people excited, especially those that might be in flood zones. Uh, if you are interested in learning more about, uh, some of those changes that are coming our way that we will have to, uh, adapt to, then, uh, tomorrow night's meeting at the, uh, four-day fighting mission, which will be the six P M. here, uh, and on Zoom if you're interested to learn a little bit more about it. It's complicated, but if I know anything about Garrett, he is good at taking complicated things and making them understandable. So, uh, for now, that is my report unless there's any questions.
No, there aren't from me. Anyone else?
Yeah.
All right. So now we're going to move over to public communications. Justine, there was on the signup board for, that was her?
Yeah, you have a couple people.
Are they on the other sheet?
No, they're on that sheet you parked.
Oh, right. You're right. Tom Tease and?
Tom Tease, two-nine-two, looking at the Avenue of Gearheart, Oregon. Frank, talk about parks. I want to say thank you to all of our volunteers. You know, I've been coming to City Council planning commission since two thousand four, two thousand five. You cannot believe the change. It's good, the change. And same thing with our volunteer fire department and fighting commission too. On the parks, um, I'd like to talk a little bit about them. Um, we have the park, and I'm not even going to mention names, in a specific way, out to, um, state property and then up almost to seventh or eighth of the street. We have one across the way here. We have a tiny, little tiny one on Cotty Towne who, anyone, I'm sure you guys know Cotty Towne. And then the one down there, but I don't know, are any of them officially named? They aren't.
You mean like a flat?
Well, no, I mean, um, you know, you have Lily Motor Park, and there was kind of discussion about this one, whether it was, uh, I can't remember.
Trailhead, yeah.
Yeah, you know, so, I mean, being we have a, a parks plan and everything, shouldn't they be named their parks? You know, give them a typical official name, maybe a flat garden if you want, but, you know, just so that everyone knows what they are. I mean, I've had people to, I don't know how many times I've had people come up to me just the last three or four days and ask me, where is this park that they have the music at? You know, because they don't know the names of the parks. So that's really all I gotta say.
Well, thank you, Tom. That's a good idea.
Maybe something later slows down does.
Slows down? Okay, I'm sorry, I forgot to read this. Oral public comment, anyone wishing to address the city council concerning men? Items of interest not on the agenda, may do so at this time. All remarks will be limited to five minutes per person. Requests to comment electronically must be submitted by email to thecityrecorder@info@cityofgearhart.com no later than four P M. The day of the meeting, in-person attendees wishing to speak are required to sign in prior to the meeting. Okay, and having said that, I know, Audrey, you want to talk?
Yes.
And then I'm, what I'm going to do is I'm kind of reversing my order. I'm supposed to talk about the written comments first, but please, Audrey, you go ahead.
Okay. Audrey Kniffa, I live at two-eighty-two Woodland Avenue, and I am addressing the city council about considering, well, we'd like to know why fireworks are not banned within the city limits of Gearheart. I know some are, but not all of them. Currently, fireworks are prohibited on beaches and state parks and on state or federal forest lands. Cannon Beach is a fireworks-free haven. Right now, it's a city ordinance. There is an area dedicated spot along the coast without fireworks of any kind, including sparklers. Other cities in Oregon that have banned use of fireworks include Lincoln City, Portland, Milwaukee, and Eugene. Fireworks spark an estimated thirty-one thousand fires in two thousand twenty-two that cost an estimated hundred and nine million dollars in property damage. More than eighty-five percent of them were wildfires. In addition, fireworks can trigger P T S, P T S D symptoms, or veterans and others can contribute to poor air quality, noise pollution, wildlife trauma, and unwanted trash. And so I'm bringing to the city council, I don't know if anybody's ever proposed banning them within the city limits, and that's what I'm bringing here. I don't know how you go about writing an ordinance, or I mean, assuming there has to be public comment, but I'm bringing that I've spoken to at least twenty residents within my neighborhood who are all very concerned about the noise, I mean, and the pollution of the fireworks that are here. And it seems to me that it's banned in many places along the coast, but they're not banned here. And so people, we were talking about with these high school kids coming here, why are they coming here? I mean, I don't know, are they shooting off fireworks here? But not in Cannon Beach, because they're not legal in Cannon Beach. And so, and those were one of the cities I found online that have banned them by now. There probably are other cities within the state of Oregon that ban them, so. That's what I had to say.
Thank you very much. And yes, I believe someone started doing something about banning them.
I thought they were banned.
I thought they were banned as well.
I thought they were banned.
In the city?
Yes, in the city.
No, le- legal fireworks are legal, illegal fireworks illegal, no ones you get from Washington, but there's no ban. There hadn't been a discussion eight, ten years ago about it.
Yeah.
It didn't, yeah.
There was, I, there was a discussion about this maybe a year or two ago, I remember, because the fire chief and, and the police at that time had made a recommendation that we allow at least sparklers, and the city council said, no, no fireworks at all. I just remember that.
Okay, well, I don't recall that. I know we did talk about it at the very beginning with, uh, Whitapong as mayor and, uh.
No, this is, this is when, uh, Paulina was mayor.
I will talk to Paulina tomorrow.
Yeah, or check, check, I mean, it's got to be in our records, because I remember I was, don't hate me, everybody, but I was, they let, allow sparklers at least for the little kids and they, I was told, no, no fireworks at all.
Okay, well.
Don't hate me, because I wanted sparklers.
Yeah, I saw signs, no fireworks.
Yeah.
Yeah, the signs that we had, we had some people that called and said, did you ban fireworks in town? Because they were reading the signs as they were driving by. No, it wasn't banning fireworks. It was making sure that people, legal fireworks were legal, that the legal ones were not. Uh, but we did not, uh, we may have had the discussion, uh, in council arena, but we never, uh, put together ordinance or considered that ordinance.
So it was too, it was too close to the Fourth of July for it to go into effect. I believe there was at least one councillor who was adamantly opposed to the, uh, wasn't that it?
I wasn't.
Right, you were opposed, so there, because it wasn't unanimous, then we couldn't put an emergency clause on it. So what is it going to go into effect by the Fourth? Is my reaction.
So then it just didn't go into effect after the Fourth?
It died. I think, I, I think it was like two days before the Fourth. I think our council meeting was like on the first or the second, and somebody said, maybe we should ban fireworks, and it wasn't an agenda item. And then I think you said, well, and I said, well, we would, you know, need to, with, the only way we're going to affect is with an emergency ordinance. And I think at that point, my, and again, so much has happened since then, but, but you were like, well, I think kids should be able to have sparklers.
Yeah.
And I was like, well, there it is. We're not unanimous. So, uh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do have a question then. If, if residents wanted to, I mean, how, how do you go about proposing an ordinance or something like this?
You start a referendum. Get people to sign on to, and then we'll take it to a vote of the people of the city. And they will decide if it's going to be banned or not. It's, uh, the Oregon way, the referendum.
And just, and just to remember, you know, I mean, we, we don't control the beach. That's state parks.
Yeah, so it's, as soon as you step over that imaginary line, they can do whatever the state allows them to do.
I would also caution everybody, since, Roger, I mean, it's, uh, remember the limitation of our law enforcement officer. So you can make whatever rules you want, but if you can't enforce them, you have to relay on peer pressure would be, that would, for me, would be another reason why you would want a referendum. You would want a lot of peer pressure. You would want the community as a whole say this is our value. Um, because otherwise, if, if we make that rule and the rest of the community doesn't agree with it, um, one officer is not going to be able to cover all of our, our city. Some of the best fireworks I've ever seen were in Californian cities where they were illegal. And you had a lot of officers on, so it's, it's, it's tough. So just remember that. I would strongly recommend that if the group, if the community wants that, that you, that you take it to a community and the vote becomes a community vote rather than just us. It would be very interesting to know how Cannon Beach enforces that. Do you know, Chief Murray?
I, I know that they had a very odd success with theirs. Um, I know I've got officer friends that are in Lincoln City, and they say that it's, they can't really do anything about it, that, you know, you're chasing your tail trying to find fireworks calls. Granted, Lincoln City's kind of bigger or larger than Cannon Beach, or obviously us as well, and, uh, but being in seaside, I can tell you there's no way that you could chase down as an officer there. It's impossible because people light them. I'll give you a scenario very quick. Someone lights up the street. There usually is Fourth of July, so people have a house party. There's more than two or three people, typically ten or fifteen, twenty. You get there after the call comes out. You go up there, you ask who did it. What do you think they'll tell you? I don't know what you're talking about. And, you know, we can't enter the home without them. We can't really, we can only go so far within our scope to talk to them, so we, we just lose traction and it goes nowhere. Um, I will say on top of this, this Fourth of July, I was actually very surprised. We didn't have a lot of calls for surface streets. Uh, we, all of our fireworks were going off on the beach. I did see some people doing, uh, legal fireworks with children, uh, but that was over before the the fireworks on the beach were. And after that, it, it almost felt like people got their, their kids on the beach and they were done with it. They flew through all their fireworks and it was over because we didn't get any complaints about it on surface streets.
Peter, you had something?
Yeah, so we, we found several of the spots where people had dug out, um, and had like, I'm not going to say professional, because I'm sure they weren't licensed, but that we could just, we couldn't get the county to send an officer. I think the county said they, correct me if I'm wrong, they had three officers working, and, um, they just couldn't. You know, once they're outside of the, the parks outside of the city, but once we're north of the city, we're, it's, we can't beat a point. Our police officers are in it. The county just wouldn't send anyone. So, and, and it's tough to ask for one officer to go up to fifty people that are drinking.
Yeah, you gotta watch the types of calls if you don't have to lie forth. It's a law enforcement officer. You can, you know, when people get together and they're drinking, they start fighting, so you have domestic violence calls, which are always going to take priority. You know, your DUIs, which are naturally, that's, that's going to take priority. That's, you know, in, in fighting, you know, other calls, those are the kind of calls that you're, that they are usually tied up in, so.
I will say, three, three years ago, Sergeant Brown had a border shot at him on the beach, that is patrol vehicle. Let, let somebody know, so.
While trying to take fireworks away?
Yeah, while, while trying to do fireworks enforcement, people get a little wild, Fourth of July.
Okay, thank you. All right, so moving on, I'm going to, uh, acknowledge the written, late written correspondence. One is from Cameron Lo- Lo- Blavett, Blowett. I, I'm not good with anything that has a person's name. Uh, Bob Carson, um, Alex Goodman, and those are all late correspondence and they have been put in our packet.
Yes, Mayor. Um, we didn't receive any, uh, email requests that, uh, Christie or Justine had received, but we had two people that are hands up, uh, at, um, yeah, I'm straight, just wanted to make your.
Okay.
Uh, Don Frank and then George Van Hulssen.
Okay. Then in that case, we'll go to, uh, George.
Chad, Don doesn't have his hand up. That was from earlier.
Oh, gotcha.
Okay.
And then Don Frank was earlier as well?
No, I said Don was from earlier. George does have his hand up.
And then there's George, he just unmuted.
Can you unclose my video?
We can hear you, George.
Okay, do you want to turn on the video or not? Uh, there we go.
There you go.
Good evening. Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor Smith for granting the exception. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, if we can just get your name and address, please?
I'm George Van Hulssen, two-seven-six North Ocean Avenue. Uh, and I apologize for not providing the notice by four o'clock. Uh, that slipped my attention today. I sent a, uh, a letter last week, uh, to Mayor Smith and the, and the other council, uh, councillors on the city council. I assume you've all received that and I hope you've read it, so I'm not going to repeat what was in the letter, but I did want to make a few comments that are on the same general topic, which is basically my opposition to the city continuing to, uh, move forward to even explore the possibility of building a new public safety, uh, facility at the Leslie Miller Park. A recent article in the Astorian, um, which probably most of you have seen, uh, quoted councillor Gould in particular as making a comment that I have heard from others as well, uh, so it's not specifically to her, but it was most recently attributed to her, that it was important for the city to explore uh, the possibility of building at both of the, uh, properties that we own. And I want to urge the members of council to keep at top of mind something which I know you are aware of, but often feels to me like, and, and to others, I believe, in the community, as though it's not top of mind for people on the council. And that is that when you say that there, that the park is a property that we own, it's important to keep in mind who the "we" is. The "we" is not the city staff. It's not the city council. And it's not even just the voters of Gearheart. The "we" is the public. It's the community. Title to the park is held by the city of Gearheart, which is a municipal corporation. The city acquired that title from Clatsop County in nineteen forty-seven. And at the time of that transfer, the county retained a critical and very important right. The county still owns that right. And the county is, uh, needs to act in the interest of the citizens, the county. And the county is a political subdivision of the state. So by extension, the, the, the community, my belief, is really the, the people of the state of Oregon. Even though title, you know, uh, to a limited degree, is currently held by the city of, uh, Gearheart. The important right that was retained by Clatsop County in their infinite wisdom approximately eighty years ago was the right to ensure that the property remains in use forever as a public park and for no other purpose. It is not a historical accident that people should think of as just a administrative matter from long ago. It was a decision emphatically stated in the deed that this was the basis for the transfer. And I believe it is every bit as important today, perhaps much more important today when there is less undeveloped land, uh, available on the Oregon. uh, available on the Oregon coast. There may be some people on council and, and some in the community who believe that if the council were to determine that the best place to build a park or to build a public safety facility is the Leslie Miller Park, that the council could refer that to the voters and if the voters approved it, that the voters have the power to waive this deed restriction. Anybody who believes that is misinformed. I want to remind the council that the last time this matter went before the voters. My sense is that the sentiment overall among voters is that they favor building a new public safety facility, whether it's a fire station or a fire and police combined. The public is generally supportive. But on prior attempts to get voter approval, the council has referred matters to the voter that present the, the possibility of building a public safety facility in a way that is not acceptable to the public. And it seems to me, again, council is, uh, working in a way that is not helpful to achieve the outcome of getting the public safety building done.
I'm sorry, George, you are out of your five minute time.
Should I have one minute?
It'll be up to the mayor.
Yes, you can, George.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The last time there was a vote, I checked, the Clatsop County Election Division tells me that there were three hundred and twenty-one voters that voted in favor of the bond measure, twice as many voted against. It appears to me that at the present time, there is overwhelming opposition among the public to building on the fire station. In the last two weeks, there's been a petition. I had nothing to do with starting it. One of my neighbors started it, uh, who is, uh, also attending this meeting online. And almost five hundred people have signed that. And those signers, by and large, were couples or families. So that represents way more than five hundred people. By continuing to insist on keeping the Leslie Miller Dunes Meadow Park as an option for exploration, not only is the city council wasting public effort and diverting important public resources, um, but more importantly, it is generating tremendous hostility in the community and opposition to, to the public safety building. It is still time for the council to, um, redirect its efforts and limit its research to options that make more sense. And I would urge the council to seriously consider doing so. Thank you very much for your indulgence.
George, you're not, uh, talking to deaf people. We hear this. It's a situation that we need to explore for the possible five hundred other voters in the city that wanted out of this area, out of this medium tsunami, and to be able to survive a large. All we're doing is, and I know you look at it as a waste of money, but all we're doing is looking at the possibility and weighing what is going to be best for Gerhart. The citizens are going to choose this. We're not, but if we don't give them a choice and show them the monetary commitment it's going to take for both places, then they can't make an open decision on it. And that is all we're trying to do, is give them a choice and let them decide. Because we are not choosing the park, we're not choosing here. What we're doing is choosing to inform the public of their choices and allow them to make an informed choice. And honestly, George, I have a personal opinion about the park, but I feel obligated to give everyone a chance to see what it's going to cost here and what it's going to cost at the park. So it's an informed decision. I consider it good governance. But thank you. All right, moving on. So we're going to just table nine four two until next month, so we're not even going there, right? Is that correct, Peter?
Yeah, so we've continued, we've reopened the public hearing. We'll be accepting testimony. It's continued, it's being continued to the time soon, which is the September meeting. Um, and then I have a suggestion, maybe in response to what, um, Mr. Van Homison said, which is is a preliminary matter, we could approach the county and say, would you, would you agree to amend this? That the land can be used for a public purpose. And in the event that they say no, it must be a park. Um, then that would naturally take it, that site off the table. Um, you know, the, the problem, if we said there's only one site, is then people will be online and they'd say, you've already decided where the site is. Um, you didn't involve the public in the process. And the third site that we considered prior to the high point um, is off the table because that site has been, part of it has been sold. So, um, we, we were down to the site that voters overwhelmingly rejected. Um, didn't seem like a good use of resources to look at again, or the other two sites. And I think everyone's aware of, um, opposition, but this, taking that site off the table at this point would make it so we're only looking at one site. And I'm not saying that that might, I mean, but I think it makes sense to at least have a conversation with the county so that people are informed of our rights.
Um, I, I, I would like to say something because my name was mentioned, um, and I would like to clarify that, um. Yes, I think I do have a right to speak.
Okay, so I have.
I would like to make clear that whoever is saying whatever my intentions are or whoever out there thinks that they can speak for me and what Dana Gould wants or what Dana Gould is going to vote for or whatever her intentions are, um, doesn't have the right to speak for me. Uh, I speak for myself and I think I've been fairly honest. I do not want to build at the park. I use the park every day. I understand the value of the park as much as anybody else. I also understand that we need a fire department or a new, a new public safety building, new, new stations, very, very much. And I also understand that just location is not the only challenge that we face. And I have worked enough projects to know how quickly you can run into unforeseen problems and when you lock yourself into any one location. And you can run into problems that could mean that we have spent some money and then the project is done. I agreed, I can only speak for myself, I can't speak for the council, but I can say I feel very strongly that the park needed to remain on the RFP, not because I intend to ever build anything on there that I never, I, not that I intend to run fire trucks out of the park. Um, but that we don't have to go back to the drawing board or that if we need some type of, if the architects and engineers can come up with some other creative solution that helps us to earn ourselves into this existing location, that, um, we are able to at least discuss it. I am not for us preventing people from being able to have conversations. And I think we need to have conversations and people online want to have conversations and that's fine. Again, if you want to say, don't do it here, don't do it there, that's great. But what's really helpful is when you say, okay, so you're saying there's a problem here, here's how we solve it. And I know that I'm running long and I need to stop, but let me just say that Dana is not driving this to go to the park. And I did not say we need to explore the park and I am going to tell you right now, I am not going to vote for us to spend money exploring the park if at the point when we open it up to a public conversation, not just a social media discussion, but it's a public conversation, if the public is overwhelmingly saying to vote your resources here, then I'm gonna, I'm gonna follow the wishes of the public. I'm not going to vote to spend money at the park. But I think that we at least have an obligation to have that conversation and not to cut it off. For real, I'm going to comment, so. My name was mentioned. And he asked, he asked a question.
As council concerns, you can.
Okay.
All right. All right, so. As I just said, we've moved nine four two to September. We're now going to new business. Anyone wishing to comment on the new business, which is announce public safety building, architect and engineering services, RFP selection committee, community members can do so, but you're limited to three minutes and you're topic specific, especially the RFP and the community members. Who I don't see here, so they can't defend themselves or answer questions, but, uh, does anyone want to speak to that? Chad, introduce the committee members, please.
Uh, certainly. Uh, and so this will be the next agenda item, uh, in regards to new business, announce public safety, architecture and engineering services. Uh, the, uh, council went out, or a couple of the members of the council went out into the public and, uh, found, uh, Robert Lee, who was here in Gerhart, and Jay Speeman, also lives here at Gerhart, to sit in on, uh, the selection committee. And I'll read the staff report in regards to that. Uh, the city published an RFP on July five, seeking proposals from qualified and experienced architects for the purpose of providing the design and construction administration services for development of a new public safety building. Ten potential bidders contacted the Clasch Group and attended the current, attended the current fire station and police station walk-through on July twenty-third and proposals were designated due by three P M. on August sixth. And to let you know, we've received nine proposals, so a good, uh, amount to choose from. In the interim, Clasch Group, work group determined the selection committee would be composed of seven individuals, each with an approximate of ten to fifteen hours of investment. The Clasch representative, fire chief, police chief, city treasurer, city administrator were assigned to the committee. Who's requested the mayor select two committee members for the remaining spots, and Robert Lee and Jay Speeman were asked and both agreed. I believe councillor Preston Deverell saw a hand in that. All seven selection committee members attended a council work session on July thirtieth, the tour of the existing facilities and discussed the deficiencies. The next steps for the committee members was to score the written proposals. So we had a meeting today, uh, to discuss how to do that, how it would be fair. And we've, uh, got quite a stack of paperwork to go through and do some initial scoring. The top three will be narrowed down and more heavily weighed interviews will be conducted. The committee will make a recommendation to the council at the October meeting, where ultimately, selection is a council decision. The official time will consist of below, so August seventh, the selection committee kickoff meeting, which happened today. August twelfth, which has been moved to August fifteenth to give us more time, Gerhart, or excuse me, August twelfth, Town Hall to introduce the Clasch Group and line out the community engagement process for the public safety building. So that is happening on Monday. August thirteenth, the selection committee meeting to review, score and discuss. That has been changed to fifteen. Gives a little bit more time. September third, selection committee meeting to finalize the architect interview questions. September tenth, the selection committee interview the top three architectural firms. September eleventh, uh, Jesse from the Clasch Group will submit a final interview scores by email. September twelfth through twenty-seventh, we'll do contract negotiations. And October second, city council meeting, the selection committee recommends to the council board the contract of the top three architectural firms. So that's the plan. Uh, any questions from council about that? No? All right, that's all that I have, Miss Ware.
All right, council concerns, Preston.
No.
Rita.
No, sure.
Sharon.
Uh, yes, I have two, actually. Uh, the first one is in regards to, uh, including the Leslie Miller Park as a possible location or at least having a review, engineering and architectural review of it. Um, my thoughts on that are, I under, I'm a person who loves to have as much information as I can get to, in order to make a decision with the information. So if it was just me, I would want to have the comparison of that site to the existing site. That's just me. I have great concerns and questions about whether getting that information is worth the angst, uh, upset and possible alienation of many, uh, of our citizens and property owners. So I don't know what the answer is necessarily. I personally, I would take it off the table, but that's only because of, of the community response so far. Uh, my second concern is, and I talked to, um, Chief Gregory about this a couple of times. His contractors working on Sunday, um, against our ordinance. We never put up signs, Chad. I think we were going to put up signs, no contract work on site. I thought we were going to put those on our city entrances. I don't remember that that happened for this year. Um, yeah, so, um, you know, this is a burden on our police department to have to even deal with this uh, in many ways, not the least of which is that they get lied to. Uh, and I think, I feel like they have more important things to do um, than to chase around these people, uh, that are working on Sundays when they're not supposed to be. So at the very least, I would ask that we put the signs up.
Okay, staff will, will get on that, get some signs worked up and I'll go back to you later.
Is that it? Dana?
I have no objection.
I'll take a motion. I move that we adjourn this meeting. I'll second it if someone doesn't.
I'll, I get it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone, for coming out. I appreciate it.